Just to begin the meeting administratively, I need to read some stuff that I have to read at the beginning of every meeting. And we'll do that before we do anything else. And then I'll go to appointing a secretary right after this. Members of the public may call in to participate. Do I still have you?
You're here, yep.
This Zoom disappeared briefly. Callers will not be able to see the meeting participants. All participants will be muted upon entering the meeting. To speak down nine or start on the phone and you will be called on by the host of the meeting during the public comment sections. All speakers must take must state their name and address. Comments must be on a topic that is on the agenda. Anyone disrupting the orderly conduct of the meeting, including by threatening hateful or sexually explicit language will be removed. Please find the information using the link above and the link above was norwalk.gov slash meetings. Members of the public who wish to provide public comment are encouraged to submit those via email in advance of the meeting. For these comments to be included in the record, they must be submitted by 12:00 PM the day of the meeting. Please email Tammy Maldonado and I'm going to read it even though it would seem senseless to do so, but for the record. T Maldonado, M A L D O N A D O at sign Norwalk C T run together dot gov. G O V with the subject line, public comment to provide within the public comment prior to the meeting. And then there's application materials can be found. At the Norwalk C T dot gov address, you want to look for Z B A. And then you want to have current items to take a look. There's a there's a long link and I'm not going to read the long. So at this point, I'm going to call us to order. And we'll do a quick roll call. Let's see, we have me, we have Lee, we have Kathy. Who am I missing here?
Keith.
Ben and Keith.
Alright, um, as soon as I see him, I'll call him. And Keith and Ben, right? So then we got five and I'm going to appoint Kathy Olson to to be the secretary this evening as our secretary. A record is on the West Coast and not able to join. The public hearings that we have a list of has been put in record. And the now that we've said who's here tonight, we only have five members, so I'm not going to be switching people in and out on the various hearings. It'll always be the same five. First is three, a twenty-five oh four seventeen dash oh three Plant Court LLC. And Kathleen, what you do is you pick up the item. Uh, you read the heading like I just did, and then you read the staff report.
Yes, so I'll read the whole heading that's on the agenda.
Sure.
You start. So twenty-five dash zero four one seven dash zero three Plant Court LLC. Continued from April seventeenth and May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Variances to elevate and alter existing S F R parking in front setback, replacement pool, replacement retaining wall section. And reduce mean high tide buffer C D dash one S zone and coastal area management overlay. Property located at forty-six South Beach Drive. And then we have a memo directed, the staff memo directed to Andy Conroy, our chairman from Tammy Maldonado zoning enforcement officer. Second revision. So in this case, I'll just read the revised portion, Mr. Chairman.
Um, let me take a quick look here.
Because we read the original at the meeting last time.
Read the first para and then you could slip when you get down to analysis, if you want to just hit the revision, that's fine.
Sure. Um, so variances, front yard thirty foot required, eighteen point four foot foot existing fifteen point seven foot proposed. Building height thirty-two feet required, twenty-nine point four foot existing thirty-seven point one foot proposed. Total building height forty foot required thirty-seven point four foot existing forty-four point three foot proposed. To elevate and alter an existing S F R. Uh, very parking in front of in front setback thirty foot required eighteen point four foot existing fifteen point seven foot proposed. Install replacement pool rear yard required fifty foot from front property line existing forty-eight foot proposed. Excuse me, existing forty-eight feet proposed thirty-seven point three foot. Replace retaining wall section five foot from property line required zero feet existing and proposed. Per table four point three point one dash C and vary twenty-five foot from mean high tide buffer twenty-five foot required zero feet existing. And proposed and proposed per six point nine point five point D point one. In C D S dash one S zone and coastal area management overlay. Property located at forty-six South Beach Drive District six block thirty-six lot sixty-three. And then what was highlighted is that the deck will be eliminated. Then if we go down to the analysis and findings which changed. Since the last meeting on May fifteenth, the plans have been revised. Revisions include removing both cupolas, reducing the proposed height by two point five feet on one wing of the dwelling. Removing the elevated deck around the pool and lowering the pool to grade same proposed location. Subsequent to recent zoning text amendments, pool will comply with the ten foot coastal buffer requirement. A variance is still needed for one foot encroachment into coastal buffer due to the balcony extension. Staff has interpreted that rebuilding or reducing non-conforming retaining walls is allowed as a right. However, the applicant wishes to be diligent and seek the board's approval as a variance for this aspect of the proposal. A decision must be made on this application by July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five's meeting. Allowing continuances cannot exceed a hundred days from the opening of the public hearing.
Okay, um, representing the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Secretary Olson. For the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I am a partner at Carmody Torrance in Echinhege and I represent the property owner Plantport LLC. And its principals, Michael and Christine Angelakis, who are both present for tonight's meeting. Also present are Craig Flaherty, professional engineer with Redness and Need, Dee Schleicher of Race Coastal, who did some coastal analyses. And Caitlin Drury of Hollander Design or Landscape Architect, and of course Oliver Cope of Oliver Cope Design. Project architect along with Pyro Castro, another architect from Oliver Cope. Uh, thank you very much for the for continuing this matter to tonight. Um, as you recall, and as the indication indications in the memo provide. We appeared before you first in April, then again last month to present an application for variance in coastal site plan for this property at forty-six South Beach Drive. You continue the hearing to tonight to give us the opportunity to review and respond to your questions and comments and suggestions and those of the public. We've done so and as the memo indicated, we have submitted revised plans along with a memo outlining the revisions and our analysis of what you requested us to do. We're certainly happy to answer any questions you may have tonight and will reserve some time if possible for summation and rebuttal. Hopefully we'll get to that point tonight, close the hearing and hopefully you'll be able to act. Uh, before you do, however, though, I would just like to walk you through for those who have not had the opportunity to review the memo. And the plans that were submitted, what the changes were and what they were not. So it's clear moving forward. Um, as you may recall, the proposal is to construct various additions to the structure, small in nature. Uh, undertake some renovations, but most importantly to elevate the structure to meet not only the fifteen foot FEMA flood elevation. But also the additional two foot city flood elevation, bringing the finished floor duct work and freeboard to seventeen feet. Uh, since the renovations and proposed additions will exceed the twenty-five percent praise value. The new regulations then require us to elevate the structure to meet minimum flood. The variances, as were noted, the front yard setback thirty required eighteen existing fifteen point seven proposed, that remains unchanged. The building height formerly midpoint under the old regulations thirty-two feet permitted twenty-nine point four existing thirty-seven point one proposed. That too remains unchanged. However, the total height, which used to be the height measured to the peak of the roof. Uh, forty feet permitted thirty-seven point four existing forty-four point three proposed. We have proposed reduction in the height for one wing of the building. Uh, we cannot reduce the height for the major section of the house as it will render that upper floor non-compliant as to ceiling height. I will just leave that to Oliver Cope to explain to you further with the plans that he'll show to you. Both cupolas will be removed as part of this application and the eastern chimney will be reduced in size. Furthermore, the non-conforming shed along the frontage on South Beach Drive is also proposed to be removed and that will open up a view corridor into the property. Um, perhaps we were not clear last time and hopefully we will be now. The height variances are not a result of any of the small additions proposed. But are a direct result of the elevation, the necessary elevation of the structure to meet the minimum FEMA and city flood elevations. There is a parking in the front setback thirty feet required eighteen feet existing fifteen point seven feet proposed that remains unchanged. The cam rear setback of twenty-five feet was changed by the zoning commission at its meeting on June fourth from twenty-five to fifteen feet. So there is no requirement for variance for the pool. And there is a one foot intrusion into that now fifteen foot setback for portion of the proposed deck. However, that was also approved by in connection with a prior permit that was issued. Uh, prior to the variance applications being submitted. Lastly, the pool in the deck, um, there is a setback to an accessory structure fifty feet is required to the pool forty-eight is existing. We're now at thirty-eight feet. Um, this generally remains unchanged. However, the pool is now going to be upgraded rather than elevated and the deck is no longer proposed. So the variance that was proposed for an accessory deck in the front yard has now been eliminated. There is no variance required for that accessory deck structure around the pool. Um, last lady, bear with me. And as the zoning's enforcement officer's memo indicated. We suggested that there be a variance for the retaining walls since some of them will be removed in connection with construction then reconstructed. We just thought it would be prudent to seek that variance since it was an interpretation of regulations. But if the staff and this commission deem it not appropriate, then certainly that variance would not be necessary. We've explained to you last month what the practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships are, and they include the irregularly shaped lot. Um, the two different FEMA zones on the property, the requirement that we meet not only the fifteen foot, but the fifteen plus two. Um, there is no vertical expansion of or of new construction resulting in an additional story. Non-conformities will be reduced such as the elimination of the shed in the front. There's a very large vegetated area on the east side of the property that we'd like to maintain. Um, the city encourages property owners to elevate to FEMA minimum flood elevations. Uh, the policy and goal is to make structures compliant, um, but not demand substantial redesign. And furthermore, the harbor management plan also encourages elevating houses to protect life and property. Um, at this point, I would appreciate it if you would indulge me and allow Oliver Cope to walk you through the revised plans. Which I think we did the best we could to address some of your concerns and perhaps address volume and massing. Uh, we did eliminate some of the variances by eliminating the elevated pool and removing the deck. But at this point, I think it would be helpful for Mr. Cope to explain what we did and what what we could do and what we can't do.
Hold on though, Liz. I just want to double check. Um, Tammy sent out. For forty-six South Beach C B A variance comparison with two columns and a proposed variance request revised variance request. Liz, did you get a copy of that?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, I just want to check all our members have a copy of that?
Yes.
Get your hand if you do, because this is important. I got it. Ben, do you get it?
This is the staff memo that's revised or is there something different?
That thing. Hmm, it's a two column comparison. It simplifies trying to figure out what's going on with all the variances from time A to time B.
Gotcha. Yeah, Tammy, you emailed that to us?
I did. I'm going to check the date, the time to help you.
Okay, yeah, that would be helpful.
And Keith, you have it too? Yep, okay.
Went out at twelve thirty-five P M.
Yeah, and the subject says forty-six S beach, excuse me, Z B A variance comparison.
Oh, did, ah, okay, yes.
All right, yep. Um, Ms. Suchi, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we did receive that and it does mirror what we had sent in and submitted to you by in written form and on the plans. But at this point, Mr. Cope, if you would not mind explaining what we've done, what we've been able to achieve and the difficulties we have with further revisions.
Well, Oliver, you're on mute.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Pyro, um, would you put up the? Drawings and and the summary of the variances that? We sent into the town.
Let me know if you all can see this. Good evening.
Yeah.
Right. And maybe could you, all right, maybe shrink it enough so that we can at least start with, um, the. Existing and proposed. Okay. So in response to the comments on massing in particular. Uh, we looked at things that we could do. The the wing on the left. Um, which now since I'm not doing this, you probably can't see a cursor, but Pyro, if you just circle the wing on the left. The upper portion of that wing is sort of a double height space associated with the master bedroom. And so what we did, you can see the dashed lines, we first removed the cupola. And then we dropped that roof two and a half feet. Um, which allowed us to keep the same pitch and plate line, but. Uh, reduce the volume, I think considerably. Where we run into a problem is in the in the main body of the house. It's a three-story house and it's a cross gable. And as I'm sure you're all familiar with what it's like in the third floor, you have knee walls. And as you start moving outward from the center line of the ridge, ceiling height starts to diminish. And we find ourselves with not even six feet. Um, at important doorways and transitions between spaces. And to address that in plain terms, you'd have to completely replan the the rooms. And you would lose a considerable amount of square footage, not to mention having a building where you just literally, it's like taking the. Uh, the top off, but not leaving anything that I think people would find. The people who are concerned about the mass, I would imagine are also concerned about the aesthetic result. So we have a poor aesthetic result and we have a terrible. Um, uh, functional problem. We did some math on the whole thing and I'd like to, uh. We can, we can get to it later perhaps because I should continue through the variances. But the amount of mass that is above the height limit represents less than four percent of the total volume of the house. Okay, um, let's move on to, uh, the. The site plan, which I think really is Caitlin is better suited to addressing that.
Uh, before you move on.
Yeah.
Be, I saw in the, um, drawing presented. To this, I guess, the master bedroom side, looking at it from the front. There was a chimney we talked about last time and being kind of overly massive.
Right.
What have you done about that?
Thank, thank you for reminding me. Um, you can see on the left-hand side of this, of the master bedroom mass that I was just talking about. Um, we've reduced the height of that chimney considerably. I'd say, Pyro, you tell me you've got, you drew it, but I think we're down about seven feet.
That's correct. Yeah, the top of the chimney now is much lower. Um, and is, uh, more fitting with what the new roof height is shown.
We, my code were required to be three feet above the ridge and, uh, we don't need to be more than that.
Okay. So just when you get down to the bottom, the castle entryway, um, is that just a design choice?
Uh, it's a, the, as I'm sure you're aware, the property has a lot of ledge and the ledge encroaches close to the house there. So we're basically coming up with a stone base at the ledge and the arch is just a way of gaining a little more headroom going through. I'm not sure that's even visible from the street, though.
Okay.
So just, just to summarize once again, the two cupolas that exist today would be removed. The, um, master bedroom wing, for lack of a better word, we've reduced the height at your suggestion. And we also have reduced the height of the chimney. Um, the difficulties are in the main section of the house, but I think Mr. Focus just described how the practical difficulties and unnecessary hardships we face. In trying to reduce that portion of the house. Um, the resulting reduction, if that could ever be achieved, would would render that space unusable. Since we couldn't even and I'm non-compliant in terms of ceiling heights.
Yeah, without a redesign of the whole roof.
It really is a challenge.
I just brought up the chimney because it wasn't on our list and the other thing that wasn't on our list is the fact that you're removing an outbuilding.
It really is a challenge, Mr. Conroy, as I'm sure you're aware, to make existing structures FEMA compliant. And then comply with all of the other requirements, including heightened stories. Uh, but I think this, uh, Mr. Cope in in consultation with with the property owner and client have done what they can. To achieve a little less massing and to reduce the side, the height of the structure as best they can.
And just to, uh, remind you for the record, the chimney is in a compliant location. That's why it's not on the list. It complies with setbacks and.
Yeah, I'm bringing it up because I want the board members to know that you've done it.
Thanks.
So the the positive things that reduce this, the mass that didn't require a variance and therefore not being listed. Uh, need to be stated so that everybody has a good idea of where mass increased and where decreased.
Thank you.
And again, none of the the small additions, which Oliver, correct me if I'm wrong, but they they amount to less than a thousand square feet. None of those drove the the height issue. The height is just the height since this is the box of the house. And when we elevate it, that doesn't change. We we didn't propose additions to the upper floors or extending an upper floor. As you've seen in other variance applications, which you've been very concerned about that should a, um, structure be elevated to meet flood. You did not want that to include additional living space or additional height or additional stories. This is not that case.
We, we did not create any additional living space in the top floor.
Um, I also. The only concern that I have about height and moving away from the existing. Foundation is that if we do that for every, uh, home that's raised. Then we end up with a lot of mass being created. And if we create a lot of mass, um, we create a very dense waterfront and then sometimes a couple of blocks in from that waterfront.
This, this house is not built to the maximum, um, in terms of its square footage.
I think that, um, you know, there's a thing of the building shadowed during the daytime, a whole lot of things to be considered. There's also the problem from my point of view, that I like to see the homes raised. But there's court decisions that say that certain requirements really need to be met for us to approve it. Um, and so my going along with approving it is that I want the mass kept to those, uh, strictures that I mentioned. Do I vary from that? Yeah, I I personally do. I don't know about the other board members, uh, if there is really good reason to do it. And it's not the matter of hardship or practical difficulty. It's if it becomes a design issue, then I'm not going to prove it. The requirement to build the house properly. Would, it goes a lot further with me than I like the design. I like the design gets you nowhere. And that, I know that's kind of funny because you do want an attractive building. But that's not where I get involved. I get involved in, you know, sticking with some rules to get things approved that. Reach not beyond the parameters I said unless there's really, really good reason to do it. So I didn't want anybody to be confused about my approach to this. The other board members have their own approach.
I think you would agree, Mr. Conroy, though, that there are substantial construction and other issues. That are attendant to reducing the main wing's height. It it's, um, that would be a condition of approval if this, if this commission decides to move down that path. That I think would be a condition that's beyond a reasonable one that the courts have typically accepted. But the fact that the roof would have to come off, the rafters would have to be, would have to come off, the entirety of that roof structure. Would need to be redesigned and reconstructed. That's a a practical difficulty that I I don't think I've seen the likes of in a long time.
And I think. Yeah, but you know that that difficulty is outside of our purview. If something's going to cost a lot more, you do know the Z B A can't consider that.
That's correct, but what you're asking us to do is to revise a dwelling. Um, to make it comply with height when none of the requirement, none of the the proposal. Uh, it has driven that height variance requirement.
Well, I do know you're starting with a building that has a high roof to start with.
Exactly.
And if if we push the matter, then you would have to redesign the roof. It can be done. It would cost considerably more money than apparently was planned. Um, so what I asked you to do is find everything else that you could reduce. Um, along the perimeter of the building and any other structures of the building. And make sure that there's more see-through space around the building. And you've done a pretty good job of that, not as good as I need, but pretty good. And I applaud your effort.
And of course, one of the other component parts of the revision is to create that pool and and gathering space around the pool at grade. It's no longer elevated so that that eliminated then the deck that was in the front setback. Plus it gave in improved the view corridor, not only taking down the shed, but making that all a grade.
No, I, you did a good job with that. We also had that revision to the the code that helps us.
Right, right.
The.
Could I?
The end result is a combination of looking at the perimeter of the building and the height of the building. Move on.
Thank you. I just wanted to make one more, uh, comment in terms of, uh, the impact and the variances. Um, the the memo says for the porch at the water side of the house, the two-story porch. That there's a one foot. Um, uh. Encroachment on the cam line, I think it is. Uh, but it, but it's, it's, yes, but it's one square foot. It's just, it just clips a corner. We're, we're.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to make sure we're not, we're, we're trying to avoid asking for.
No, I can live with one square foot. I can't live with the foot, so good, good.
Thank you. Um, so again, and to your point, we've tried to to do. Um, a number of things that we can to mitigate the things that we really have a terrible time addressing. So we've, we've lowered the roof, decreased the volume of the master bedroom wing, dropped the chimneys, eliminated the cupolas. Brought the pool, um, structure down to grade and we're eliminating the existing shed.
Now, I, just by the way, I don't want to dominate the conversation, so if other board members want to jump in and comment or ask questions, please do.
Leave me, Andy, I will. So I, I, my, my comment is that, uh, following up on Mr. Cope's summary. Um, yes, a lot of changes have been made and they are all beneficial. And where I am slightly losing the plot is, um, what are some of the additional changes that we might? Be thinking about here?
You mean, what are the things that are going beyond what we try to hold them to? Well, the building expanded in width and length, if you will. So the rectangle moved outward. So the rectangle moved outward in each direction, Y and X. Um, the Z, which is going up from there, um, is, is still, I think forty-four point four, something like that. Um, a little bit over forty-four feet. They did reduce part of the structure in the additional wing. I think, what was it, down to forty-two feet? Is that right?
Hiro, help me out. I think we took it down to, two and a half feet from forty-four point three.
Yes, that's twenty-two, I'd say.
At forty-one now.
All right. I'll live with forty-one. I, I still have a bit of a problem either, I mean, you, you grew the width of the house and you grew the height. And I could take you taking a big whack at either one of them and I'd be happy. I know you're not going to solve both, but I do think you can make a better effort to solve one of them. Now, if it were me, I would, how old is the roof? How long has it been up?
I think the house was built in twenty thirteen, just before the FEMA regulations or the FEMA maps changed, firm maps.
So, and you didn't save portions of the old house and raise them up? That we know of, anyway. But I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out if the portions of the roof are really old.
The original house was taken out in, in this, I think Sandy, so this was.
It's a new house.
This is a new house on a double lot.
It was new, new, not parts of the old.
That's why it is as high as it is. It's, it's where it was built at, and at current codes when it was originally built for height and uh flood level. And that is why this, you know, because it's not that old, raising it to current flood.
Because if it's old, then you're going to have to fix it anyway, but.
Andy, from my perspective, to begin with, this is a very complex house. Uh, the Dutch Gambrel style leads itself to complexity and difficulties. Um, you know, I, I think they've made a very good effort, uh especially on the left-hand side of the house to reduce uh the volume, the height. Uh, I don't see any possible way of reducing the height of the main body of the house any further without literally, you know, uh blowing off everything above the second floor and starting over. And that's, that's a lot to ask of the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. As I, I inartfully said, if we were to try to achieve compliance, that half-story on that side uh which is existing would be rendered not only non-conforming but non-useable. The ceiling height.
It's, it's a very complex structure and you know, uh, as an architect, I understand it. I've worked in this style and I've worked with these problems. Uh, could more be done? You know, as Andy's saying, yeah, it's in the fine tuning of this and uh, you know, uh, let's, let's work through the rest of your presentation to, you know, formulate a final solution.
Yeah.
I would like to.
One note then, before Kathy goes, I want to just say one note. I was also talking to perimeter and I think what was exposed last time um in our last meeting was that by taking down the outbuilding, um, you believed you could take that footage and add it to the current structure. Um, I don't think so. But anyway, taking down the outbuilding is really good for the objectives we have that it had to be therefore added back to the uh main building. I, I don't know that that makes that much sense. There are probably areas within the main building that.
It was not added back.
Yeah, no, since the first, you know, the building has been the exact same footprint.
Right. It's not a trade in a literal sense. We're just trying to balance the things that we need to do with things that we can control and can change. We, I want to be clear, this house is not built to the maximum square footage or footprint that it could be built under zoning if it, if you were starting from scratch. Because of the con, the, the consequences of.
You know, I, when you make a statement like that, and because I think you've all done a good job. I don't want you to think that. I believe you haven't. I think you could do better. But when you make a statement, you know, we're, we're staying within zoning code. No, you're not. So don't make the statement. You want variances. Yes?
I, but I, I think the comment, Mr. Chairman Conroy, is that um we're not expanding the footprint of the house beyond that which zoning would allow. You're right, there are some variances required as a result of elevating the structure. Um, if, for example, if, if this, if this property owner undertook renovations, um, how was, how was I going to say it? If, if they were to undertake renovations and not do anything else, um, and stay under the twenty-five feet, twenty-five percent, we would not have to elevate the structure. But as soon as they start, go beyond that twenty-five feet, no matter what we do, the structure needs to be elevated, whether there are additions or not. As soon as we trip that twenty-five percent, that box now needs to be put up on stilts and we can't really do anything else about it. And I think it is, um, it's a real challenge to, and I, I think it's um, it, I may, I submit to you, it may be somewhat unreasonable to expect a property owner to now reduce the height of the roof when that's the existing roof pitch and the height of the structure. And wire before you is be, is for FEMA compliance.
No, but Liz, that's, that's also nonsensical. You know that it's going to be too high, right? There isn't a question. You know, you expanded the perimeter um with an idea that wasn't verified this time, that was given last time. And once again, I think everybody's done a good job, but I think there's more you can do. And uh I'd be happy just to wait till the next meeting to see that it gets done. I really do like the effort put in. I mean, I think it was a splendid uh revision, absolutely splendid. We still got a problem. I don't like the perimeter expanded and proof too damn high. Those things in combination, just sort of disregard what the objectives were, uh us holding it to the parameters for raising a building.
And could someone during the next?
If, if I could just.
Use of this discussion, give, quantify the extent of the perimeter expansion, because I have somewhere missed that.
Oliver, could you show?
One of the original presentations that we made, right? We discussed the fact that because the house had to go up, we needed more room for the stairs, which is what's to get to that level.
Mm-hmm.
The consequences of increasing the number and size of the stairs to get into the house was we had to push the two garage bays further west and further east in order to make it work. And then we continued the roof lines down to cover the, the slight expansion to the left and the right to make up for what we were losing at the center with the stairs. So we brought the roofs out over that and down lower. And that was an architectural effort to mitigate the amount of height that we were gaining at the lower level of the house, rather than having it be a kind of high-waisted just a result and, and not addressing it architecturally and in terms of scale. Um, I think we'd end up with a much less pleasant result.
Sure, and I, I do understand the evolution, um, and uh I was simply asking, somebody have a number for how much you expanded the perimeter? That's what Andy was hoping.
You know, you want to see the drawing. I want to see the drawing, people. You want to see the floor plan. New one superimposed over the old.
We have that. Can we go to the plan that shows what is being removed and what is being added? There was a schematic plan that was.
Yeah, I saw it.
There you go.
Hiro, the plan, I think, not the axonometrics.
We have floor proposed floor plan.
Right, this shows the amount, the red zone here.
Is new.
Is new. And while one of the other consequences of elevating, which I didn't mention, on top of the staircase sides is that we have piers now that are not insubstantial to hold up the building. And so we've lost some space because instead of a six-inch wall, we have a two-foot pier that uh um also encroached on what was going to be left. So.
So if you see where the pier is on the, let's say, the, the left, bottom left of where the garage is, there's a two and a half foot intrusion. That's the, that's the front setback that goes from eighteen, seventeen, or whatever it is existing down to the fifteen and change because of elevating the need for the piers and extending that roof line out to make it appropriate. So the, the dwelling generally stays the same. The red is the, the red on the, on the left of the screen, that's chimney.
This, this is the only real expansion to the footprint of the house.
Well, in the front of the house, you have some expansion in the front and on the sides to accommodate the garage change.
Right, to accommodate the piers necessary to lift the house and support the house uh to meet that code requirement. And of course, yeah, the chimney on the left is, is new.
Yeah, but the piers could have been in a different place and you wouldn't have as big an expansion, but would affect your ability to have the two garages.
Right.
But anyway.
So may I, may I lean?
Yeah, Kathy.
Okay, so.
Problem I'm having is that I can't see saying no to somebody else that comes in asking for something similar. And I, I really don't want to go down that road. Kathy, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so yes, I agree, this is a complex application. I am very familiar with raising houses, FEMA's requirements. I've done many. This, I think the applicant has made many accommodations based on the board's request over the last two meetings, um, which I am very pleased with. Um, I think you're, the comment about being able to move the piers, I don't necessarily agree with those. I think the size of the driveway and the garage, where else would you put the piers? That's, I, I, Andy, I don't understand that question because the house has to be balanced. FEMA requires a certain amount as well as planning and zoning. Um, so that I'm not really sure of, but I think living on the water is a hardship in general in twenty twenty-five. I think our job as a zoning board is to evaluate the hardship as it relates to the zoning regulations. So I would be comfortable allowing this slight height increase um over what's required because the math just doesn't work on this property if you do not allow them this extra foot. I mean, the house is already existing. Yes, it's a large house, but I mean, they've already taken down the roof and the, you know, the chimney on the other side. I, I just think it's, you know, it's not reasonable for us to, you know, sort of look at any additional changes. I, I think the application as it stands now, to me, is acceptable.
Mm-hmm. Um, yeah, not quite to me. The, my, the reason for describing the perturbances, if you want to call them that, in, from the existing house to the planned house at the ground level was to say, if you had a trade-off between the height of the building and, and doing that expansion, which would be the easier to work on? Uh, and the answer is, I think, the roof. I don't think it's easy to change the uh lower level and the pier placements or anything else. So they are going to expand and um Kathy, I just think that we're not in a position to keep approving things that are outside of the parameters. So I have, my biggest problem is the roof. Is there a way to do it differently? I, that's why I asked if it was an old roof. Because if we're going to work on a roof, then we can change the design of the roof.
Um, is it possible to, that like, I got something in my mind, if I could see the east and west proposed elevations of the house.
These are, uh, this is east elevation. Proposed with the drop roof uh over.
Yeah, now I'm looking more at the main body of the house. Um, and you know, I mean, if, if we're really going to push this, and I know Andy is trying to, and I really, I don't want to see the entire roof blown off. I mean, it's, uh, but is it possible to introduce uh on the east and west sides of the main body of the roof, a clipped or jerking head gable that will give the impression that the, the height of the roof is somewhat lower along the perimeter.
You're talking about up on top?
Yes.
Yeah, so that would make a space there more usable.
No, it wouldn't. Actually, it, it.
You're talking about a saddle?
Do you know what a clipped gable is?
Yeah, you're talking a small gable or you're talking a saddle?
No, no. If you took a, a regular gable roof.
Yep.
And clipped each end of that gable roof from the ridge down to the plate. It yields a lower plate height at the east and west end of the house. It begins to uh lower the apparent height visually from the ground.
Okay.
But what does that accomplish? Lee, I mean, I, I respect what you're saying, but what does that accomplish? They're still going to be over the height. It doesn't matter.
I'm looking for a way to, to accommodate this without removal of the entire roof.
May I?
And that's, that's just a suggestion, a possibility.
But nobody actually sees this side of the house because it's ledge and it's trees. This isn't, this whole side of the house is not viewed.
I'm just giving a suggestion.
Okay, no, I appreciate that.
Other, otherwise, you know, I do have a problem with the height as Andy does.
Well, let me ask a real quick question, just practical one. This is the east side of the house we're looking at, right? So the approval we gave last week, the people that are living there see this side of the house.
No.
Hidden?
We don't have.
The other side. The approval that you granted for thirty-eight South Beach, that's on the other side.
Okay.
And could I make the point that someone who was trying to maximize square footage and gain the, in terms of, of engaging in something that's like, like this, but was trying to maximize and use the elevating perhaps as an excuse to do something else, would have put a, a cross gable or a big dormer on this section of roof that slopes down. But we never did that. We didn't exploit this situation to make things larger, bulkier and gain more square footage. This is just the house going up in the air. Hiro, if you show the, show the south elevation, because I think that helps make it more clear.
Oliver, Oliver, there's a point that your um client made, which is that they use the upper story. And the upper story wouldn't have enough height for them to be, to meet code and to be able to walk around in it.
Well, this is why I want to show this elevation. Because this shows the third floor level facing the water. Right? You see the height of the doors on that, on that balcony.
Mm-hmm.
That, imagine what happens if you try and take four feet out of this roof. There's, you can't do it.
Because I think what we're asking is we're asking the applicant then to make the third story non-compliant with their ceiling height if we, if they lower the roof. I just don't see how it would be a functional space. It, it's really why I think that, that it doesn't af- affect me with the additional height. Because this is like a one-off scenario, Andy. I realize we have people that come before us and they ask for variances that are egregious and you know, we have to hear every application, but I, I just see in this situation, if we ask them to take off the roof, forget the economical, forget the environmental, all that, just in plain, you know, functionality of their home, the home that they had, which they're being penalized because they live on the water, has to be raised. And now we're making them take the third floor off, so there it's no longer functional. That's where I see the hardship is, is that, that's really why I would approve a variance for it, just to make myself clear.
Yeah, I, I think uh that it would require a different design of the roof to keep the functionality of that floor. And not be at a full forty-four. I mean, what I was hoping is they'd come in with a slightly different design. Uh, and I also hoped it was an old roof. And that they'd be asking, let's say, for forty-two feet instead of forty-four. Because have you seen us bargain before trying to get people closer to the parameters we want?
Uh huh.
But uh, in this case, they're kind of locked into their parameters. So the question is, do we approve it or not?
But Mr. Chairman, I don't believe for, in the past five years, when you request, you've been asked to review uh requests for height variances for elevating structures that you've asked applicants to reduce those variance requests, albeit some of them were much less than this, but nonetheless, I don't believe in the variance applications I looked at and the decisions that were rendered. Uh, the, the determination was that applicants need to come back to read with a redesigned roof to make it closer to what the code requires. The various requests have been, have been approved as they've been asked.
Hmm, that's not true. We did in many instances require a change in whether they stayed within the foundation or not stayed within the foundation. And if they didn't, what very, 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 very good reason did they give? Or in the case of a height, could they bring it down and closer to the acceptable parameter? And everybody's pretty cooperative. I haven't run across anybody who isn't. I, I think this is an odd situation. This is tough.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
I'm having a problem with, with blowing out the perimeter and taking the height up. And the only reason the height's up because it's high already before you raise the house.
That's the very crux of this issue is already high and all we're doing is meeting FEMA. We're, we're not adding to that, that height.
And varying the Norwalk code. Um, somebody was jumping in. Who was that?
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's Christine Angelakis. I'm, um, I, you know, I, I recognize this is an unusual circumstance per, mostly because it's a relatively recently constructed home i- in two thousand thirteen compared to a lot of the houses there. Um, and so I think that the challenge for us is, you know, needing because of the twenty-five percent allowance uh to, to go up to this current flood height uh requirement. Um, that you don't come across this very often and, you know, and you're concerned about precedence, but, and I, but we're not a house that are trying to add an entire third floor. Then I would say, of course you would reject that. But I feel like to be penalized because it's not old enough and low enough, like as it stands. Um, I mean, we've done everything we can to to make that actually the house hopefully prettier um and lessen, you know, um. Trying to keep, you know, I mean, every neighbor we have has written a letter of support, every, everyone. Um.
Well, what I was hoping is that you're trying to something creative to bring the height of the roof down some amount. Not zero amount, but some amount. And that would address it. And then we'd look at the, uh, perimeter and make sure that, that what you have is absolutely needed. Thus far, except in one instance, as I look at the house, that's true. What is needed is absolutely needed. There's one spot that that's not so true. But in the height of the roof, um, we have been dealing with house raising for quite a while and and a lot of times folks just rebuild so that they can beat the code. Um, and I know you don't want to do that. You want to raise it and keep it because you're saying it's a relatively new house and you don't want to go through expensive changing the roof design. Plus, you like the design. Those factors I understand. I just want to make sure that we're getting our best effort to move closer to the parameters than we currently are at. But you've done a fine job thus far.
I think everyone agrees with that. A very fine job. Um, Handy, with regard to the perimeter, um, I am not as convinced as you are that this would be a precedent. Uh, this would set a precedent that would be exploited in the future. Um, because really it, it, you know, and bringing together the statement of the homeowner and what we were just looking at with the red lines. The, the fundamental house is the same. It's these buttresses, if that's the correct word, or these pillars that are needed for the raising, right? That's the only part that is going outside uh of the existing perimeter.
Yeah, kinda, except it had to go three feet closer to the street. Um, I, I don't know that that is a design requirement. Um, I do think the expansion left and right, as you look at it from the street and where the pillars are um is necessary and would be very difficult to change. I'm not so sure moving it out toward the street was a necessary change. And the roof, basically, the argument is it would cost way too damn much money to build a new roof under. Um, that's not something we deal with in CBA.
Actually, I, to be uh fair, I'm not sure I've heard uh that argument made by anyone.
Well, last time it was made, last time it was made very clearly.
No, that, that's.
It made repeatedly, as a matter of fact.
It's, it's that we would be losing the third floor because it, it wouldn't meet code because of the height. I mean, and maybe you'd have to stand inside it to understand where these are pitched roofs and bringing it down by four feet, you, it would render the third floor completely unusable.
Now, what I was suggesting is you think about the roof design as we have done with others and see if you can bring it down closer to forty rather than that forty-four. And, and some instances, people come down six inches, they come down a foot, they come down two feet and they come closer. Yours would have to be redesigned and therefore cost you a fair amount of money to do that. And the pitch of the roof would change because you're going to have not as pitched a roof with the redesigned roof to give you more room and space within it. And um, I just wanted to make sure that we've thought that all the way through and we, we're sure that uh it's impractical, totally impractical to do that.
We have thought it all the way through and it is totally impractical to do it. I can't be more clear than that. I've been doing this for more than forty years. I've been, I'm licensed in multiple states from, from Washington state all the way across the country and if we were starting, some of the jurisdictions I work in, the flat, a flat-roofed house is limited to have a lower height than a pitched roof house.
Uh huh.
I think what you're suggesting would produce a house which had of such a low slope roof that it, that it might be virtually flat. And that, I think, given a lot of the, the commentary.
No, I wasn't suggesting that at all. I could draw it, but I don't plan on.
But you're, you're looking for us to, to go back.
I want you to think about it and, you know, keep working on the idea. And also the three-foot push forward to get closer to the street. I want you to think about that, too. Now, the way it's laid out, I would think you would say, well, that's impossible. We can't do anything with that. I'm not so sure. Look at it and be careful. I'm not talking about the east to west extension or the push apart because of the garages and the staircase. I'm talking about moving forward toward the street.
Uh, may I ask Mr. Coke, as far as I understand, and I know where the property is, um, is it's surrounded by ledge, correct?
Yes, and.
So therefore, moving certain things are nearly impossible as far as I understand.
The, the others, the other thing I was thinking about is, and this, you know, this is, obviously, this is a new code. And new codes have unintended consequences. And I think we're in the middle of one of those unintended consequences. Because I think you point out, um, Commissioner uh Olson, that uh it's math. We have an existing structure and volume and we have to elevate it to meet the code. We, we're not expanding it vertically. There are consequences for us that have required us, we, to, to increase the size of the stair and things like that to get up higher, which is part of the reason we've moved towards the road. But the other thing we're dealing with is calculating the height based on the average grade around the house. And this is a, a not quite unique piece of property because you have a pretty bony coastline. But it starts up quite high, which is the ledge that you mentioned, and then it descends to the west. We're only able to average the grade, I think, from, Craig will correct me if I'm wrong, but a ten-foot perimeter that's mapped around the house and then averaged. If we were to take um, go further out, then the impact of the ledge might ultimately impact on the calculation of the height of the house. So some of this is percept, it's, it's perceptual. It's.
Well, hold on a minute. Tammy, could they change the locations from which they're measuring the height of the house?
So.
Put her to sleep.
No, you didn't. Sorry. So you have to, you, you can only alter grade by no more than three feet, but also you have to start that. I have to check the definition. I think you have to start at the original grade.
Yeah, Craig, uh Craig Flaherty, uh professional engineer, we prepared, help, help check and prepare one of the average grade calculations, but the um, I think the suggestion is there is a prescribed location to do the average grade. But the perception of the average grade is actually that the average grade is much higher because one whole side of the house, the, the grade is almost a story up, you know, twenty feet away from the foundation. So the perception of the average grade is actually probably several feet higher than where we must measure it. We've measured it accurately. We've complied with your code. The numbers you have are per your code. But I think Oliver is introducing just another unique circumstances specific to this property uh that creates a perception that if the perception is the average grade is higher, the perception is that the overall height is lower.
So I'm, I'm checking that definition for you, Andy, if you still.
I'll check it.
Yeah, give me one second.
But I, I do thank you, Craig, because, because it it doesn't appear as tall as if it was based on a flat plane because it has a much higher element to the terrain around it. So to walk on the street, to walk around it, I don't believe you're as impacted as it looks like you are in our two-dimensional drawings of the house.
So it looks like the house is a bit, in a bit of a hole?
Coming from the east, absolutely. The house is much more settled into the terrain.
It's tucked in.
I'm coming toward the house from the park, the square park um, up the road and I'm looking at the house. Does it look like it's settled down in a few feet?
Yes, the entire master wing is tucked into ledge and stone wall and landscaping.
All right. I mean, I could accept that as an argument that um, the forty-four feet is partly a perception issue.
Yeah, the entire, yeah, you're that, the one where we did, where we were able to lower the roof, that whole space is tucked into ledge and what, and stone wall on the road. Um, and trees and hedging. And so you really only start to see the house at the garages.
And the three-foot extension toward the front, Oliver? Do you think that's absolutely necessary?
It is. We would rather have had all of that more compact. But again, we are, we are, we do have to get up another five point nine feet and that means more stairs.
So, so to clarify the definition for grade finished or finished grade says where finished grade is established by filling height as to building or structure shall be measured from no more than three feet above the existing grade. So they could potentially change the grade, but then they're in partially in the V zone. You can't do any filling there. Um, you know, I think staff would prefer they not do additional fill in the flood zone.
All right. So from understanding what you're saying is that that could possibly be measured, given a different building height. Um, depends how close to where the building to start during the measurement.
I mean, I still think they're going to get the same ultimate problem.
If you did the building height measurement after the building was built, you wouldn't get the same measurement. I guarantee it because it slopes up away from um, the lower level of ground as you move away from the east and west sides. And to the front as well. So you build a bigger building. Um, the measurement is going to be pushed so that they can go higher and be within the code, not four feet higher, but higher. Anyway, so that, the perspective issue I think is reasonable. I don't know if four feet is reasonable, but the perspective issue is valid. Um, the three-foot extension at the front, not so much. Um, it could have been partially done in the front and accommodated stairs, not just straight across. Um, I'll leave that to the different commissioners. If we're going to vote tonight, rather than extend it, um, they can figure out how they want to vote. We'll be doing that after we finish your presentation.
Should we, should we move to the site plan and the, and the swimming pool? Because again, I think that's a pretty substantial um
Change.
Uh, change and, and in the context of trying to do the things that we can do. This, this is one um which uh uh, I think makes a substantial difference to the way it's perceived from South Beach.
Um, am I, I don't know who I'm looking at.
This is the uh survey, zoning location survey that shows the additions in the brown color.
Yeah, uh huh.
And um Oliver, I'll let you.
Okay, and then, well, I was going to say, um, I'd hand this off to Caitlin because the the pool and the landscape is really their bailiwick, but um what, where we were originally was elevating the whole pool structure on a large sort of floating concrete assembly that allowed drainage underneath it. So that the pool and pool terrace were adjacent to the first floor of the house, the elevated first floor. But uh, given the, the many discussions about massing and impact, uh, the Angelakis came back to us and said, they, they would be happy to move the pool back to grade and not have it have the immediate connection to the first floor. So um, we have done that in the same opposed footprint as we were looking to do with the new pool. Because we're trying to move it out of the velocity zone, which I think, again, um, is in the spirit of the code change. Um, and by being in the AE zone instead of the velocity zone, we're still anchoring it um against flood and, and technically addressing all the conditions, but it reduces its impact on the community.
Caitlin, do you want to show the landscape plan?
But.
Sure.
Maybe we should, we'll hang, we should hand off this to Caitlin.
And, and your question just before you start, do you have any elevations or other kinds of illustrations that would help us see the benefit from South Beach Drive in terms of mass of the work you've done to change the pool?
We could, we could show what we proposed originally and then show you what we're proposing now. Hyro.
That's the back.
Okay.
We would need to go to front elevation maybe or?
Yes.
Well, can you go to the, yeah, can you go to the earlier submission with the elevated pool?
That I don't think is in this set. It's not in this at all.
Okay.
Yeah, I think when I last saw drawing that showed the elevated pool, it was from the rear of the house.
We have this new elevation that shows a lowered pool, pool at ground level.
I think it'd be helpful, Caitlin, if, if you called up your plan.
Yes.
I can stop sharing, Caitlin.
Yeah.
Sure. Um, just for record, Caitlin Drury, Hall Under Design, we are the landscape architects on the team. And um, I'll share my screen. Can everybody see? Can everybody see this rendered plan?
Not yet.
There we go.
There we go, yeah.
Is there a way for you to do the before and after?
Yes. So. Subject to thing loading. What you see here in the rendered plan.
The before.
Is the before, the previous proposal. We are no longer proposing this, but the basic intention of this design proposal was to set the pool. In relationship to the existing covered porch, which is being elevated, as Oliver said, 5.9 feet to meet the FEMA code. So the surrounding deck was supported above, all the water was flowing below. Race and Reddison Mead have done the appropriate calculations for this. We have done those new calculations and they can speak to those details if there's any questions on that, but. The basic design intent on the master plan is to no longer. Set the pool in relationship to the covered porch at the main floor level. It's now at grade. So it's essentially the same coal planer, same elevation as the lawn and landscaping around it. And there is of course minor variations to, to do the appropriate drainage, but the. The same size pool, it's, it's behind the VE line in the same way that we are trying to meet the intention of that. You know, all the changes are flowing from that FEMA code.
But it's a, it was a, it was a platform at elevation. What, what was the terrace finished elevation, 19, five or?
So that's another element that we can, we can. Call to your attention is if I just zoom in a little bit here, the existing pool and terrace. Sits perpendicular here at approximately 10.7 and there's a, a wall along the north side. Which I can actually go to art demolition plan, which might clarify this point. So the.
I think we're, we're trying to assess how much we've lowered it since we had originally submitted.
We were proposing.
What was the elevation that we were proposing when we submitted it? And how much did we lower it to reduce the overall massing on the property?
This existing pool was at 10.7 with a wall at 1250 to the north of it and along the property line. All of that is going away. The previous design with the elevated deck was 1850 to relate to the covered porch. The current proposal is to drop it down to nine.
So in, in the contrast between current and proposed is three and a half feet?
Well, the, it's being, it's being lowered from the current, but, but what we're saying is in order. To try to make a substantial concession. We've, we've lowered the pool nine and over nine feet.
Nine and a half.
From our previous design proposal.
Yeah, no, I, I. I do completely, completely follow that and was, was moving on to.
And we're, and we're about a foot and a half lower than it is as you might see it today.
A foot and a half. Okay. That, that's really what I was getting at because, you know, for a lot of folks, it's how they see. The way it is currently, which people are accepting and. Sounds like you're reducing the mass by one and a half feet. Is that right?
Right.
See from the street.
Yes. I will also just point out with the current landscaping on the property and the current wall along the property line. We're not proposing any changes to that height. And so from a pedestrian's standpoint, you won't see any differently. Because the hedge is already at a height that you're not able. To see into the property, you know, for normal privacy screening. So what we're intending to do is to extend or repair. What needs to be done when the shed comes out. And when this wall is adjusted to meet the corner of the garage. Otherwise, we're using the literal same material and extending the existing screen hedge.
So comparing where it is today, which is a slightly different location and the height of it as it exists today. This pool plan raises it a foot and a half above where it is.
Lower, lower.
Lower is the.
Lower it, lowers it.
So all of the proposed yard is now roughly at the same level. So it's not, it's not stepping up a few steps to the pool, then dropping back down to the front yard.
We don't have a pool that's raised high that has surrounds around it with tables and chairs and umbrellas. At 20 feet in the air.
No, the, the stone terraces, these are of course inspiration images, but the general look and feel that we're. Hoping to achieve is similar to this reference in the lower right.
And again, our neighbors are very supportive of this because of course their second and third floor views. Will remain, you know, in terms of water views from. From their homes.
And we're taking out the shed as well.
Right. So I don't know if you can circle where the shed is currently, and now there will be a tree. If you can put your cursor where the. With. Bull shed is. Just your cursor, Caitlin.
Okay.
There you go.
That's where the.
The second, the second change we made to the master plan and the pool area and the gardens is that there's only three trees proposed. In the current plan, previously we had additional trees for in the front yard and the previous proposal even more. So we have been working. Diligently with the neighbors to get the landscaping in line with everyone's hopes for this. Stretch of the property.
One last question I've got from. The landscape planner as well as the chief architect. If I'm standing in the street in front of it, because I go by there, but I don't pay attention to houses being down three or four feet or up three or four, that's not something I pay attention to. Is this house down from the curb level? One foot, two foot, three foot? Can't be level.
No, it's, it's, it's not, it's not down. At, at the street level.
Well, Andy, I think, I mean, that's exactly what my thoughts were, and I think have been answered. I think it was Caitlin who was saying that as you walk along. And I've been walking along there for roughly 30 plus years at this point, which. It's kind of a horrific thought, but for me. It's not going to be any different as you walk along the street there. And I think what the applicant's pointing out is that as you get further across to where. I don't know who lives there, but where your namesake used to live on the other side of that little park. Then those neighbors will benefit from the fact that the pool is being lowered, albeit by one and a half feet. From current and also I think the, the other element of that is that it's a, it's a concession and it's. I think we all agree, a significant one from what was proposed when we started a couple of months ago.
Oh, it's good.
To answer your question better about the sunken nature on the, on the. West side, it's sort of, there's continuity around the curve where there's the hedge and the retaining wall. You might start to think it was sunken in a little bit, but where you really do feel that it's sunken in is on the east side. Because that's where the ledge comes cascading down towards the street.
The ledge on the west cascading down.
No, ledge, ledge is on the right-hand side of the house in this, in this drawing. So that's to the, to the east there.
I could share the street view there.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That'd be great.
Mr. Conroy, if you were to come down Rocky Point Road and make a right, South Beach, there's the ledge, that's on the east side. And there's the.
So this is what we're, what we're saying that.
I just, I know where the ledge is and I know what's there and what you're talking about having there. What I didn't know is where the house sits exactly.
Can you see my, the street view?
There it is. Yeah, we can see it. It's just a few feet.
You see the house in the right side of the picture here.
Yep.
And, and you could see this large knoll on the left side, right? So the. We have to take the average grade quite close to the house where the grade is low, right? But really from this whole side, perception is the ground is much higher.
Yep. And if we're coming the other way.
If you're coming the other way, you have the, as Oliver was describing, it, 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 it gives you the same. What I would call maybe optical illusion in that the, the wall and the hedge come up that five or six feet, almost to match that left side. So it, it feels like. This is, you know. Almost subterranean, but you know, it's probably a foot higher at the garage door than it is in the gutter, right?
And, and Craig, you can show the, the shed. Actually, you just went right by it. That's going to be, it'd help our neighbors have. I don't know how to get there.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, that, that's the shed that would be entirely eliminated, replaced with hedge and a tree.
And by the way, just the brown house in the left hand, extreme left hand side of the. That house there. That one. I just, just for context. There's an awful lot more going on in these adjacent houses than. Then we're proposing to do.
And so the pool being put down to ground level is very helpful.
Thank you.
So make sure all the board members get to weigh in. Ben, did you have further comments or questions?
Oh, I'm all good.
You're good? And Kathy, I've heard from you. Do you have anything further?
No, sir.
I'll just add that I think that the change with the pool. Is substantial and I think it adds to the quality of the. The site plan. I think it works far better with the existing. Perimeter landscape and adjacent properties.
We did receive one more letter of support from a neighbor.
Yes. Would you like me to read it at this time? Andy?
No, I just, I didn't get the earlier part of the comment because it was so low in volume. What was your first statement?
Oh, Tammy stated that we have what we received one letter.
Yes, Kathy, Kathy, make sure the letter is read.
Okay. The letter is from Heather Tarrant, T A R R A N T. It states, Dear Chairman Conroy, I, Heather Tarrant, own property located at 47 South Beach Drive. Which is directly across the property at 46 South Beach Drive, South Beach, excuse me, Drive in Bell Island, Rowayton, Connecticut. Michael and Christine Angelakis, owners of that home, have shared with us their renovation and other plans for the dwelling. And the variances they seek to accomplish their goals. We have listened and participated in the last two ZBA meetings. We support their request for variances and urge the zoning board of appeals to approve their application. Sincerely, Heather Tarrant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tammy, we don't have any others that are unread, right?
No, we read all the, we referenced or read all the previous ones and there was a mix, there was an opposition one and we reviewed the potential, the. The sketch plans that they had submitted. We do have several attendees. I don't know if we want to open up.
I think we need to go to those, but Liz, are you ready to hear from the other attendees?
Of course, Mr., of course, Mr. Conroy, sure.
Okay, right. Tammy, I'm raise your hands for those who. Oppose.
Okay. So if you're in opposition, this is, use your raise your hand feature if you would like to speak. If you've called in, as Andy mentioned earlier, you can press star nine to raise your hand. No raise hands. No raise hands. Do you want to pull for the converse now?
So there are no other, no others? That was just that?
No raise, yeah, no raise hands for support.
No raised hands for support and no raised hands for opposing.
Anyone opposing? Now's your last chance to raise your hand if you'd like to speak.
Okay. So. I don't know if you need to revisit anything, Ms. Suchi.
Well, Mr. Conroy, I, I would like to get a better sense of the commission's idea if you feel it. Necessary for us to take one last pass at some of the comments that, that you have raised. I'm not sure if your fellow commissioners feel the same, but if that is something that the, the group as a whole deems appropriate. Or if you're now satisfied with the answers we've given and the revisions to the plan and the mitigation and the compromises we've made. That would be helpful to guide us on, I guess, how we all can proceed. Since you do have another month and you can act on the 17th of July if, if need, if need be. But some of that guidance would be helpful to us at this point.
Besides me, is there anyone else that wanted to see further improvement in the plans?
Well, the only thing I can say is. I'd like to see a little bit of fine tuning. I'm not sure that the roof can be lowered. I think that some effort could be put into exploring how to. Measure grades slightly differently that might give us. The foot or two that we're looking at, although I'm not. All that.
I'm kind of, I'm kind of there on the, the measurement and the perspective issue. But you're right. If they could bring it down six inches, I'd be happier.
You know.
I know there's, I know there's a way to do that, by the way, but that's not here, neither here nor there.
I, I feel the comments from the neighbors, especially one across the street. Who. I, I think is most greatly affected by the elevation of this house. Says a lot to me. And I think we have the time and. I think we can ask the applicant to make. One last effort. To. Try to make the numbers work. My biggest concern is that. You know, if I'm around on this commission in five years and others may be. That we may be looking at this same problem. On a dozen or more houses in Rowayton that have been built within the last. 10 to 15 years that are going to face the same problem. And if we can begin to answer it now.
Very strict thus far, Lee, with the houses in Rowayton. You, you know that.
Oh, I know, but I'm concerned that as the properties were built up. And the flood elevation has been raised.
Raised, yes.
That as these houses come into play in five years, we may be facing the same problem again.
We could. I don't think that you can raise houses forever. I mean, we're not building aircraft carriers.
No, we can't. I, I, you know, we have. Environmental issues that. May prohibit.
I'm fine with.
See of properties.
I'm fine with somebody looking at the front setbacks and making sure they're absolutely required. I'm fine with looking again at the measurement and are there, are we right or wrong, or is, can there be an alternative measurement? Perspective issue is fine with me. It helps. The change in the pool helps a lot. The change in the new wing helps a lot. So I'm pretty much there, but I just want to make sure that we've done everything that can be done reasonably.
Very well. So we're going to ask them to make one more review of this?
Yeah. I think since we have one more month available to us, I think that would be wise to do. We did have.
What we were asking, I, I would not be seeking further modifications because I think and we're. I completely understand. We all have the same concern about precedent. And what might happen in the future, but if we're looking at mitigating a four foot situation with. Six inches to 12 inches, let's say. And, you know, frankly, in a, in a trading kind of a sense, then I. I'm not, I, I'm not convinced that that is a reasonable ask. When you set it against the, the future precedent issue. So I. I would certainly be ready to. Consider this as presented.
I concur, I concur with Keith as well. I think the applicant has made significant.
Thinking differently. Ben, what do you think?
I'm, I'm ready to vote on it as presented. I did not plan to ask them for any additional changes.
So Lee, you want to wait a month or you want to vote tonight?
Well, we have. Well, uh, we have three board members that I have respect for. And I'm not convinced that. You know. Asking them to come back, even though I've stated it that, let them come back. I, I think they've made great strides on this and.
If you think that they could improve it, I think we could ask.
I, I don't think. I don't think there's gonna be any great improvement. If, if we're looking for the word great or substantial. I think we would, I think what they would come back with is inches. And I'm not concerned about inches. I think if the neighbors are satisfied that the height is acceptable, I'd be willing to vote tonight.
I think you're ex- uh, you know, putting words in your mouth, but taking them from my own. I think you and I are saying essentially the same thing, Lee.
I'm ready to make a motion then, or second, uh, somebody else's motion.
Up till later, right?
Now, not now.
I know, I, like I said, I'm, I'm ready, not. Right now.
We'll, but we'll vote tonight, uh, when we get to that phase of the meeting. And we won't, uh, ask them to delay till next month.
So you're gonna close the public hearing now?
Yes.
Shall I read the next one? Andy? The next applicant?
Uh, Kathy, go ahead and let me make sure I've got my paperwork.
Sure, it would be item B.
Yeah, A C R Property LLC?
Yes.
Yep, go for it.
Um, public hearing item twenty five dash zero five one five dash zero one, A C R Property LLC. Continued from May fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Variance is a front yard setback at Lane Road and East Rocks Road. Parking within the front setback at Lane Road and East Rocks Road. And proposed block, back out space adjacent to Lane Road property line to construct new single family residence. C D dash one M zone, property located at Sixth Lane Road. Let me read you also. Are you ready for the staff memo as well?
Um, I want to interject that there, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but there has been a concern raised regarding notice requirement. And I'm not sure if I fully understand. It was an email received. Very late in the day today. Do you want to go ahead and read the staff memo and then talk about that or?
Does it pertain to Sixth Lane?
Yes.
Okay, let's just finish where we're going here and then, um, open it. And then we can deal with that. And then we also can decide whether we can proceed legally. Um, Lee's gonna run this one. I'm gonna let him run it. Kathy, Kathy's gonna finish up, uh, what she was talking.
Yes.
Okay, so staff memo from Tammy Maldonado, zoning enforcement officer. Um, regarding twenty five dash zero five one five dash zero one, A C R Property LLC. Variance is front yard setback thirty feet required at Lane Road, thirteen feet proposed and thirty feet required at East Rocks Road. Eighteen point five feet proposed and thirteen feet to roofed entryway at Lane Road. And parking within the front setback thirty feet required at Lane Road. Eighteen feet proposed and thirty feet required at East Rocks Road. Twenty foot proposed and back out space adjacent, adjacent to Lane Road property line. To construct new single family residence in C D dash one M zone. Property located at Sixth Lane Road, District One, Block eighty three, Lot thirty three. Refer to Town Clerk map one four three three depicting north, north parcel. Request applicant seeks front setback variance and relief of parking location requirements. To allow construction of a new single fam- family residence on a vacant lot. Background, this vacant lot is the northern parcel of three lots now under common ownership. The current minimum lot area for C D dash one M is twelve thousand five hundred square feet. This lot is undersized at seven thousand one hundred and sixty one square feet. However, the single ownership. Slash merged lot clause does not apply in this instance. As the lot was created prior to subdivision regulations as detailed in article one dot two one dot three dash B. Nonconforming lots created by deed, et cetera, prior to subdivision regulations. Analysis and findings, application of setbacks as prescribed under the current zoning regulations. Provides a very small building envelope. This is a corner lot with frontage on three sides. Each of the three fronting property lines requires a thirty foot setback. This reduced building envelope also presents challenges for the requirement for two zoning compliant parking spaces. And an allowed back out space. The existing lot configuration, along with the regulatory changes affecting corner lots. Could be seen, could be deemed, excuse me, a zoning hardship.
Wooden stake in our wheel and Tammy's gonna tell you what it is and then you'll have to help make a decision.
Okay, Tammy, why don't you go ahead on this?
All right, so it's possible. Concern was raised, the email was received.
Be loud.
A concern was raised, email received by myself and actually Kathy Olson was C C'd on it, which. Members of the public are directed to only communicate to me and then I forward that communication along. Regardless of that, uh, it says the sign part of the email indicates the sign announcing this meeting. Was immediately removed from the residence property with no further notice given of the postponement for to, for notice of tonight's meeting. Um, and there's further commentary, so I'm not sure if that means it was removed temporarily, which I was, uh. The applicant removed it and I was told it was put right back up. I, I sent staff out today to confirm it was there. They observed the wrong address. I neglected to make the pass by this afternoon, so I need to hear from the members of the public and from. The, uh, applicants that the sign has remained up and remains up today. Otherwise, we've got a notice error.
Will the representative for the applicant please step forward and identify themselves?
Um, hi, I'm Patsy Gill, architect. And, um, after the previous meeting. I informed the owner that the signs would need to stay up. I drove by later. I didn't see the sign up, so I told him he has to put them back up and he said, okay. But I haven't been going, going by to check.
Is your client, uh, participating tonight in this meeting? That we can ask?
I thought he was.
Yes, he's here.
Okay.
Will the owner please step forward and identify themselves?
You have to make sure that you can speak. Look to your left and see the microphone, click it so that you can be heard.
He's saying you need to unmute.
But on your screen, it'll be on the lower left.
Can you hear me?
Yep, yes.
Hi, thanks. Uh, I'm Arnold Quello. I'm the owner of A C R Properties. Uh, the sign was removed after our first meeting, uh, because we had some Zoom problems with, uh, Patsy. And then the signs were put back on, as you know, Patsy, uh, told me. I just heard from, uh, today that the signs were not there. I haven't been into the property, you know, in a while. Um, I can't tell you if the signs are there or not. What I could tell you is that I did not authorize anybody to move the signs out of there because they were put back together. Um, so I don't know. The, I don't know if the signs are there or not.
So we do, I'm sorry, we do have an attendee who, um, sent that email. She might be able to confirm if you're willing to hear from her now. If she. If the sign is there, she's a neighbor.
I would certainly like to hear from that, uh, that, uh, individual.
Okay, Amy, you have your hand raised. You can speak now.
Great, thank you, and thank you for seeing us today. Um, I will tell you it's kind of surreal to have this meeting following one where. We're talking about the intricacies of, uh, a major house. In, uh, Rowayton and those of us that are on the call today are very concerned about our neighborhood. Uh, changing and the gentleman, it seems that owns the house has got no vested interest other than monetary. In, uh, the changes.
Before you go any further, we just want to know. Can you confirm if the required zoning sign is up or not?
They are not up and they were taken down immediately following the meeting that. We had to get off of last week due to technical difficulties.
All right, when did you last get a chance to see if they're up or not?
Yesterday.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, this, the signs were put back up. I, why would I take them away? There is no interest on me. I'm taking signs. Away, you know, I put them in, you know, since the beginning.
You admitted you removed the sign just after the meeting, though. Understand how we were like, okay, you just said you wouldn't take them away, but you did.
Was that?
You, you, you admitted that you did take the sign.
I did take the signs away because the meeting, it was done, so we took the signs away and then, you know, we reschedule it. And as my architect said, you know, put them back up, which I did.
No. They were never, they were never up and they're still not up and they're not up now.
We have a conundrum.
No, you don't. Just have to make a decision.
Well, let me, uh, let me pull our board members. I, I see this as a very serious issue.
It is.
And it, it's, to me, I see this as being no different than. If the green cards were not returned or properly mailed.
Yeah, particularly after the changes to the zoning code.
Yeah, so if the neighbor, Ms. Cooley. Hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, uh, says.
Coelo or Kuyao, which is it, Arnold?
It's Q.
Q.
Mine is Q.
Um, other board members want to, uh, voice on this?
I, I think if there's no notice posted on the site, that we would not hear the, the applicant today, in my opinion. It's part of the rules.
Yeah, I agree.
Keith?
So.
Sorry, I was, uh, committing the mute unmute error. Uh, I completely agree. We can't consider it. The circumstances.
I, I, I feel the same way.
We'll make a decision.
Are down, we can't consider it this evening. We'll have to put it off until next month.
You need to get the sign up tomorrow and keep it up for the remainder of the time until a decision is made.
And check that it stays up.
Maybe I should hire a policeman. That way it should be all the time.
Uh, I don't know if they have to do that, but you do have to find out if somebody's taking your sign down. If that's the case, yes, you have to contact the police and talk.
Okay, I'm very sorry, we can't proceed. Uh, Ms. Gill, I'm very sorry.
So we'll continue this to the July seventeen.
July meeting, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Mr. Chair, should I read the third applicant?
Kathy, um, the twenty five oh six twenty six oh one Daniella Alfaro.
Yes. Um, variance to allow parking within the front setback thirty feet required, zero proposed. And tandem parking following, after the fact conversion of one car garage to living space at existing. Single family residence in C D dash one S zone, property located at thirty four Garner Street. And as for the staff memo, is from Tammy Maldonado, zoning enforcement officer. Twenty five dash zero six two six dash zero one Daniella Alfaro. Variance to allow parking within the front setback thirty feet required, zero feet proposed. And tandem parking following the fact conversion of a one car garage to living space at existing. Single family residence in C D dash one S zone, property located at thirty four Garner Street. District two, block twenty seven, lot forty one. Request applicant seeks relief of parking location requirements to allow two tandem parking spaces in the driveway. Both with the front, within the front setback in order to resolve a zoning violation and maintain the after the fact garage conversion. Background, this single family home was built in nineteen sixty. At that time, the zoning regulations required one parking space to be located behind the front setback. The single bay garage met that requirement, but was converted without permits within the last two years. As such, the property is currently under violation for those renovations without permits. And for operating a rooming house which is not allowed in the zone. The converted garage, along with the remaining lower level, was utilized as a rooming house with separation locks. On the bedroom doors and a shared second kitchen that has been installed without permits. Staff instructed the owner to cease parking vehicles in the grass adjacent to the driveway. More recently, zoning staff received a complaint that an animal care business is operated from the home, which was. Corroborated by an online business listing. The homeowner alleges that this is an erroneous, uh. Erroneous listing and has been requested that it be removed. The complaint remains under investigation. Analysis and findings, there is no zoning hardship. This is a self-created issue that stems from illegal conversion of the garage to support the illegal use of the home as a rooming house. Restoring the garage would obviate the need of a variance for parking and return the property to existing nonconforming with number of parking spaces. The tandem spaces are sought due to current regulatory requirement of two parking spaces. And prohibition of tandem parking for a single family dwelling. However, whether one prior to nineteen seventy eight or two parking spaces are required, they must be located behind the front setback. This property has been advertised on Airbnb. Zoning regulations do not prohibit short-term rentals of a single, single family dwelling such as Airbnb. The violation is for making separate kitchen, kitchen and separate locks, rooming house. The property owner may let rooms provided there. Oh, I'm sorry, the property owner may let rooms provided there are no separation locks, separate units. Or cooking implements and no more than three unrelated persons occupying the home.
I have a couple of questions for Tammy. Um. Wh- when did the current owner, uh, become the current owner? And secondly, I didn't quite see the. Relevance of the advertising on Airbnb.
So, um, I believe they took ownership in twenty twenty three, but we can have the owner confirm that. They're, they're the, it's owner applicant. Uh, presentation tonight. Um, and then, uh, the, I was clarifying that really more for the public. Because we received a lot of complaints regarding the Airbnb, um, so I wanted to say it, but they did have a violation for. Creating a rooming house situation and installing an illegal second kitchen. Um, they're, you know, part of. The variance is sought to sort of allow them to continue to do some, something beyond single family. Again, we don't, we don't restrict the Airbnb, we just restrict the, you have to maintain it as a single family home. And the number of unrelated people within that home.
Got it, thank you.
Well, does it say anything on the Airbnb that indicates they'd have access to only part of the home?
Well, so when it was, I don't know what the current status is. I don't know if any conversion has been done. They're still under violation. They're. They're petitioning or they're seeking variance to keep the converted garage, again, converted without permits. Um. The, I believe the kitchen was removed, but a, a permit wasn't sought to do that. Um. The, my colleague that is handling the case file, this has been in front of the zoning citation hearing officer. And they continued it to allow the due process of the folks to seek their possible variance. Um.
Well, the hangup that we would have before we get into the presentation would be, um. If you had more than three unrelated people. Um, in addition to the owner. And if it was advertised as a portion of the house that was, could be kept separate, then I think. Whether the rooming house definition is just a definition, this certainly isn't a single family home anymore. And I've got a problem with the garage and somehow I think I want to have a problem with the whole thing. But I want to hear the presentation.
I would just like to ask one thing, just for my, for education, um. Is it, is it allowable and has it happened? Is it is it allowable and has it happened for variances to come before the board when there's, for want of a better term, an investigation taking place and there's a violation in existence?
There's nothing in the code that that disallows that because it being in many instances, a variance can cure the violation. But in this case, it's staff position that this is self-created hardship.
Thanks, Tammy.
Sure.
Who's representing? The application? Speak up.
Oh, we we are ourselves.
Okay. And your name is Daniela?
Yes, I'm Daniela. My husband Martin.
Okay.
Hello, if I may please, good evening, everyone. First of all, they're leaving the space. The garage was never listed on Airbnb. It was never. We converted that because it was just a storage. We never parked a car. And we just use that as a storage. So I figure I use that because my mother, she's almost to turn to be turned eighty. She has Alzheimer's and we need A D C access for her to to when she's gonna come and stay with us. If you look at the Airbnb, it's the two other rooms that we have in the basement. We already took out the kitchen. Again, the garage area was never listed. We're not intending of using that for Airbnb. We understand that, yeah, we're supposed to get permits. But being that it was an existing, we didn't extend it out of the the house. We used that what was already existed, not just enclosed it. I'm a licensed contractor in Westchester. I figure I can do this myself since it's our home. But we were not and thinking of it was gonna be like a big issue with the neighbors. We don't allow any parties, any any party in more than two people at the time. They they have to have good reviews. We don't overuse the driveway or the street.
Can I ask you a real quick question? I might want to ask two or three. Is the house, which is a single family house, divided with lockable doors and two kitchens?
No, 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 no. There's no kitchen downstairs. There's no kitchen. You know, it's just that they can go through the basement, through the driveway. And that was that they used to be the garage door. So that that would be easy access for them to go in and out.
But your house on a slope?
Yes.
Okay, got it. So the investigation is proceeding and you say that you don't have lockup doors to separate parts of the house and you don't have two kitchens. Is that correct?
No, yeah, yes. And we will resubmit pictures and everything, yes.
Okay. You, being a contractor, are aware that there's been a very permissive change to the zoning code re-mother-in-law apartments? And if you're not familiar with it, you should contact zoning and get yourself familiar with it. Because you almost get guaranteed the ability to have one. But I don't think that would be something that would be Airbnb-able. Because you wouldn't be able to present it as what exactly it is. So I'm a little confused about the Airbnb entirely.
Can staff interject real quickly on just to clarify something? So what I was referencing, the violate, the self-created hardship for the violation was for the parking. So if you convert the garage, regardless of the use of the property, which as I've said, you are allowed to utilize it for Airbnb with with the restrictions of the of the number of unrelated persons. What I meant was when you converted the garage, you then forced your parking into and you've and because you don't, because you are using it for Airbnb, you don't have enough parking for even your single family use. And as staff had noted, you've been parking in the grass adjacent to the driveway. You have since ceased to do that. You did note that. I don't, the 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 fact, you're correct, Andy, the A D U, they wouldn't be able to do, and I think we've already talked about that with them because they're not gonna be able to provide additional parking. And secondly, they can't use the A D U. That does have a prohibition of you cannot have that for a rental term of less than six months. So that's where we were at on that. So this was, staff was trying to work with them to, you know, potentially do something there. But then again, we were advised about a possible additional violation.
Have you been communicating with them about the structure and the variances requested, et cetera?
Yeah, I met with Daniela.
Okay. Do you think they would benefit by delaying till next month and getting back in and sitting down with you and also finding out about the mother-in-law apartment?
They don't really have an alternative. Well, so they so they they don't want to do the mother-in-law apartment because they wanted to, they won't be able to Airbnb it. But if they keep, they could potentially rent out rooms. Like, that's not an issue. As long as you don't add separation locks or have the other kitchen cooking facility. So that's, I think, and they're not gonna be able to provide additional parking. They're already seeking a parking variance. And we.
They want to get a variance to do it in the front of the house.
Right. And then but to add an A D U, you have to have additional parking. So.
Could I just add, I'm sorry, the the space in the garage is not, it was, it's not meant to be Airbnb. That's that's not, that was never our plans. From the very beginning, even before our Airbnb started, that was never intended for that, and we don't plan to do it either. Ian has looked at our listings and, you know, he he's seen that that was never listed in ever as part of Airbnb.
Also, if you look at the.
Wait a minute, before you go any further, yeah, we really do need you to make a presentation, but the garage is forcing the issue with parking. Because you should have parked in the garage and you chose not to. So now you're asking for variance in an area where you shouldn't be getting variance. That's the that's the issue.
But if you look at the drawings, you can clearly fit two cars in a driveway without without touching the boarding line.
Oh, yeah, that was another thing when we spoke to Ian about it. He did mention that if we were to fit two cars, you know, before the 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 border line, the 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 line, you know, the space, the property line, we were gonna be able to to get a permit to keep the space if that was possible. And when we when we did the drawings with the architect, he did, he did draw the two cars that was gonna be possible to to keep it outside. And I think a single family house was had, is able to have two cars.
Right, that's the nature of your variance request. That's what you're seeking the board to grant is to have the two parking spaces in the driveway.
Yeah.
And they do fit.
But but because you've altered the garage, you're so.
I thought it was.
Do you have a drawing or whatever that you want to present to us this evening? Or do you want to wait till July and talk further with Tammy? What's your?
We did provide the drawings.
You're able to share your screen.
Oh, I oh, I don't I don't know how to how to.
So when we met, I advised you that you would be presenting. Okay, so I can call up. If you give me just a moment, I can call up. So you don't have a presentation. You just made a bring up the plans?
Okay, let's wait till July.
I gave all my.
We're not going anywhere with this. We need, even if, you know, I sat down and did drawings freehand and got my zoning permit. You can do the same thing, particularly since you're a contractor.
No, no, we thought.
They have plans. They're just not prepared to share them, even though I advised that they'd need to do that. I can I can call them up from the webpage.
So we don't have the plan. They do. So we need the plan.
No, no, I have the plans. Yeah.
I don't, you know me, and I don't sit around administratively screwed up. We move on.
Okay.
So if you would get everything together, chat with Danny if you need to find out more or help with Zoom. And let's get ready to make your presentation in July. Also, you're gonna have to make a very convincing case that you need the change for parking. It's gonna can't be just, oh, I want one. You're gonna have to make a good case. We understand. Right?
You need to keep your signs up, okay? Keep the signs up that advertise the public hearing.
Not a problem.
So I'm not gonna put it to a vote. I'm just gonna direct it to go forward.
Okay.
July seventeenth.
Yep.
Seventeenth. Okay, you're in town? You're here then?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye bye. I think I gotta see drawings and have explanations to even begin to deal with this.
I need a lot of information on this.
Yeah, I it's not going anywhere until that.
Because first of all, anybody.
We're not throwing them out. We're just telling them delay.
First of all, anybody that proceeds with any work without a building permit or zoning permit is got a real problem in my book.
They do. Well, they have a problem less with us and more with the building department. Even though the building department seems invisible half the time. With respect to what we're working on tonight, we have the initial item to proceed with. And.
Yes, Plant Court LLC.
Yeah, this is the point we get to where we can't have any more input, support nor commentary from the applicant, just the board itself. And I'll open the discussion. I'll make a motion that we approve this and somebody can add the details to the motion as we go through the discussion.
Mr. Conroy, respectfully, I'm not going to add anything. I just want to remind you to you also have the CAM application that you need to act on as well.
Yeah, we have to make both decisions.
Thank you.
With with respect to the decision on the variances for the property. I don't want to be influential. Because I know that I often am. So I'm going to abstain. Let me, we you need four positive votes to move this forward.
Well, would somebody like to make a motion on this item or discussion? Actually, we technically we need a motion and then we need to discuss.
Yeah, I moved the item so that we go to discussion because we do it backwards every time. So I decided we'll do it right. And so you make a motion and then you can amend the motion and add a whole lot of detail to it and then do a vote.
My feeling is the applicant has made tremendous headway on this project since we last saw it two months, first saw it two months ago. I don't think that they could make any substantial reduction in the height. Except by removing the roof, and I think that is an extraordinary request from us, and I don't think it's really without substantial demolition to the existing structure even physically possible. I think that the intrusion into the front yard to me is minimal. Intrusion into the west side yard is minimal. The reconfiguration of the pool and the terrace, I think, has substantial positive aspects to the project and you know, I'm I'm fairly satisfied that they have jumped through as many hoops as we could possibly ask them to. And anybody else can comment?
I I think you summed it up very well, Lee. I concur.
It is definitely a law of diminishing returns at play here. I think
Yeah.
They've they've done about as much as we've asked them to.
Yeah, I think if somebody had, I mean, if the house that was there before Sandy was being reviewed reviewed for new construction, I think you know, the design would generate something very different today than what is there. And I think we, as a board, have to work with as much as is there substantially.
Do we need two separate motions, Tammy, or?
We do, Keith.
Yeah, and it's cleaner to do them separately.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the non-CAM a- as submitted.
I will second that emotion, that motion.
All right, so if you're in favor of the motion, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Right, and I'm abstaining. So four positive votes and it passes.
I will make the motion that we approve the CAM application for this site as has been amended for this applicant.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and I abstain and so it passes.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Z B A. I know this was a long and somewhat tortured exercise for everyone, but it was not without the thoughtfulness and concern that you all expressed, and we certainly appreciate that. Thank you kindly for your time and for your diligence. And I know on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Angelakis, they are most appreciative of well, but I I won't speak for them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
That Roman structure in the background is is not your home, is it?
I wish it was. No, it's not. That's my summer home, where I'm going to have my my dog grooming next week.
Well, it's some, it's it it's your summer home or summer home and summer not home.
It's my, I wish it was my summer home. Thank you, everyone.
Place, I gotta.
Thank you, Eugene.
Thank you.
You all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. We have, we have work to do.
To those board members that were saying good night.
Yeah.
Don't. Good job, Kathy. Good summation there, Lee. And you guys knew that I was gonna vote against it, so I decided to abstain instead. Because I didn't want to drag anyone else along with me because if you didn't have four positive votes, it wasn't gonna pass.
Well. And I think. I I will, I would like to reiterate, you know, we've, we've had some difficult items come before us.
Yeah.
And recent memory, this is one of them. And I think we're gonna be facing more of these. And it's gonna be up to us to get a good grip on it.
Well, Will, I, you know, I was fighting it simply because we have really made good progress getting people to comply with that or have damn good reasons why they can't. And as soon as that goes away, you're gonna see applicants come in with all kinds of stuff and.
Well, you know, I I think if anybody reads through the transcript of this hearing, I, you know, we.
Gonna know they passed. What do you mean?
We passed it, but let's say we didn't make it easy and it's not our intention to make it easy.
I I got the feeling that they had a design in mind. And that design is fixed and they weren't gonna change boob. And that was the way it was gonna be. So.
Well, my feeling also.
Against it, and I didn't want to do that in the end because you guys seemed quite favorite. I liked their effort, by the way. I thought they made a major effort.
We all did.
Right.
Did a good job.
Should we approve the minutes? Do we still have to approve the minutes from the last?
Yeah, the last two. Can you interject? Because we have several attendees still present, and I just want to clarify that both Sixth Lane and Thirty Four Garner are continued to July seventeenth. So if you're interested in joining the Zoom at that time, you're welcome to do so. Thank you.
So take the April minutes first. And does have you, anyone who was present at that meeting is going to vote? Anybody have a change? In the minutes? No changes. All right, all in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
We don't need seconds. And with the May minutes, make sure I'm looking at them here. Yep. May fifteenth. So is everybody happy with those? No changes?
No change.
No changes.
Okay, so all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain since I was not here last month.
Ben is recorded as having abstained. And are there any open issues either with training or whatever that we need to deal with? Have we heard from the education group that gives us our training recently? I thought I saw an email from them.
From the, from the bar?
Yeah, I thought I saw an email about they're setting up training and have you gotten one?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. I did get something from the Connecticut Bar, um, informing me of more seminars available, and quite frankly, considering I sat through eight hours, uh, couple of months ago, I'm not going to do it again until I have to.
Well, you have to, yeah. So, uh, uh, I think, has everybody been through the training? We don't have anybody hanging out there?
Everybody's been.
All right, so with that in mind, um, I'm not going to worry about it too much. Anybody have another issue that they need to discuss tonight?
Nope.
Ben, thank you. I appreciate that, and Kathy, thank you for your feeling.
You're welcome.
All that, I bid, bid you adieu, and I'm going to go to my summer's place in Rome sometime.
So adjourn, motion to.
Have a good evening.
Good night, y'all.
Stay cool.
Yeah, you too. Bye.